All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Town of Acton Selectmen's Meeting of December 29, 2021. I'm going to call the meeting to order, and we're going to pledge the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with the Town Administrator's Weekly Update.
Just a few items for you tonight in an effort to save time. First is just FYI that the mileage increase is going up to .585 effective January 1st. We follow state rates, so it's going up to essentially 59 cents January 1st. Next is just a notification that the Planning Board is holding a site walk on Saturday, January 8th. This is regarding 55 Red Gate Lane. They're looking for a conditional use for RV and boat storage. Anybody looking for more information can contact the Land Use Department. Mr. McGurty spoke to me in regards to office hours. I'm in the process of putting an announcement together. I guess I just wanted to touch base with the board. I know that we're missing a member. He's looking for hours on Wednesdays from 9:00 to 12:00. Before I make that, is anybody else interested in adding to those hours? You know, an evening, even if it's just one a month, it's always good for all of our working residents.
Evening's better for me, like Thursdays, like I can come in for Thursdays.
Tom, are you thinking every week or biweekly, or what are we thinking?
I think I'd start out weekly, but if there's not a lot of interest, maybe go to biweekly or whatever. And I'd be open to doing some evenings as well. I think that's a great point.
Okay.
So.
All right, I'll put something.
Well, let's start it on Wednesday in the mornings.
Yep.
Weekly, and we'll go from there.
Okay. So we'll have that posted to the public for next week. Next is, you've seen a couple of emails I've sent you regarding the Fire Chief and a Menful Director. According to the Fire Chief, a statute has changed that now requires, based on our ambulance level, for us to have a Menful Director on staff. I sent you the statute, which was 126 pages, and a proposed contract of employment and other information. The Fire Chief will be here next week to discuss that with you in more detail. He asks, however, that you look at it in advance because he's hoping to move forward with it right away and get the posting advertised. The auditors have sent over an engagement letter for the Chair to look at. Normally, it's something that's discussed. Just letting you know that I plan on putting that as an agenda item next week, so you really want to start giving it some thought as to whether or not you want to go out and advertise. The engagement letter is for the upcoming year's service, so before next week, kind of get your thoughts together on what you want to do with that as far as going out to bid. We'll have the engagement letter for you to review, and the Treasurer will be here to give you her opinion of pros and cons.
When do you expect a decision to be made on that?
It doesn't have to be made next week. The fiscal year doesn't end until June 30th, so we're about six months in, so we're...
But if you decide to put it out to bid, that takes some time.
Yeah, so we would want to start, you know, at least by February, I would think.
I don't know about you, Kim. I'd like an opportunity to meet with the auditor.
Sure.
I've never met them. I'd like to, you know, just have a chance to talk to them. So someplace in that process before we make the decision, if you could just let me know, and we'll find a time to do it.
Yep, so if you're the only one, and I'll check with David, who's not with us tonight, if you're the only one that wants to meet with him, certainly we can organize that, but more than one of you, it's going to be considered public and I could bring him to a meeting.
Okay, well.
So that's...Kim, do you have any interest in meeting with him?
I mean, I've met with him before.
Okay.
It doesn't matter. I mean, do we want to do it in a public meeting, I guess, or is it...you just haven't met him, and, you know, it'd be good to meet him.
There are some things that typically I would ask the auditors in an executive session.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if that's permissible as an executive session for that purpose or not.
I mean, if, you know, if you look at 405.6, I mean, it lists out some very specifics. I mean, if you have personnel concerns that might be tied to an auditor, let me review the statute, and I'll get back to you on that.
Okay.
But if it's just you, again, you're welcome to meet with him.
That's fine.
Okay. Let's start with that.
I want to meet with him or her, whoever it is, and it's the partner. I don't need to meet with the manager, if they have a manager in the account.
So we'll schedule something for just you to meet with him. If there's any concerns that come out of that, then we'll bring in the other board members and review the executive session. Last two items, you can see that the windows are done, and the used windows, much to my dismay, are left behind because some people said they wanted them. It's Wednesday. I'm hoping by Monday's transfer station run that whatever's left goes to the transfer station. It was part of the agreement that they were going to take them until we told them to leave them. So please, I know Virginia, Kim, take, 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 so I can dispose and get the room cleaned up.
All right.
Last thing, I did reach out to the Sheriff in regards to the last meeting that we had. He told me that by the end of the week, we should see numbers. There were two applicants...sorry, I feel like I'm echoing. There were two applicants for deputies that were interested in taking over the possible contract to the Sheriff's Department through November of '22. So basically, what they're doing is pulling their salary wages so that we can compare them to what Deputy Sivney was making and make a determination as to whether or not the towns can fund them without a special town meeting. So I should have that information for you next week. That's all I have.
Does anyone in the town interview them, or is that done by the Sheriff?
No, the past two deputies that we've had, the Select Board and the administrators, have done the interview process.
Okay.
Members of the Sheriff's Department do sit in on it, and they, you know, do give us a recommendation, but essentially, it's our decision.
Got it.
In conjunction with Shapley.
Thank you.
You're all set.
Ma'am.
All right. Warrants and bills, I signed them and you signed them, so we're all set there. I need a motion, or I guess I can do it.
Make a motion to approve the agenda for the meeting of December 29th.
All right. I'll second that. All in favor? Minutes of the last meeting, we're going to table those, just because they're not quite ready to go.
Yeah, they're not.
Point on that, when I got those minutes in mail, I can't open the document.
The email?
Yes, it was a Word file.
It was a Word document, yep.
Yeah, does anyone else...I guess no one else seems to have that problem, so I'll...
I'm not sure. They probably haven't tried. That's fine. Let me resend it in a PDF and see if that's better.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so we did that. We did that. Department Heads Committee Chair Updates, do we have any of those? Oh, we got Leslie.
Good evening. I lost the floor, Committee Chair. Jennifer, you'd asked me to come in on the 29th. I wasn't sure if you still needed me to or not. I touched base with Will about the engineer for West Shore Drive, and he still hasn't received any plans yet, so we're still in a holding pattern. I wanted to reiterate the importance of making sure that we do everything by the book in this. This is a high-profile project that has three agencies, three government agencies involved. Inland Fisheries has been down and spoke to the Road Committee. They've met with West Shore Drive residents. Deanna has told me he'd be happy to come in and speak again, answer any concerns, and basically, their job is to make sure that there's access to the lake. When it's all said and done, I think that they will be reasonable as long as we don't reduce the size of the culvert. They would like to see it increased, but, you know, hopefully, we won't have to go that route. DEP is also, would also do some permitting. They had told Will at one point that they would permit the culvert to be done in kind. When I talked to Army Corps of Engineers, he came unglued when he heard that because that's not what they would permit. So we've got conflict between what three agencies want and, you know, what we would approve, and personally, I would hate to see us run afoul of the federal government. Colin with the Army Corps has been here twice. He did come to a Road Committee meeting, which I would ask that you all either...Tom, I think you were at that meeting. Either watch or re-watch, just to refresh yourself on that, because Colin had told me that if we did this the wrong way, it's not just a matter of fines, that the federal government would require us to redo the culvert to their specs if we do it wrong or if we don't get the proper permits. So it's critical that we dot all our i's and cross all our t's.
And with all of those agencies and knowing that we've already been contacted by an attorney, you know, on behalf of one of those agencies, it's probably going to be good to choose our best land use attorney as well to make sure we're covered and guided along the way.
Right, right. But I also wouldn't want to see us antagonize Inland Fisheries.
Right.
So, I mean, that's something that we need to bear in mind. You do catch more flies with honey than you do with vinegar. So I would...
We'll tread lightly.
Do you think we've had any issues like that to date? Have we done anything that has sort of set this up in the wrong way, you think?
Well, initially, we were on a learning curve, and we...the Road Committee had done a grant, had wrote a grant.
Yeah.
And one of the things that we didn't know, mostly because we didn't know, was contacting Inland Fisheries. We know that today.
And we admitted that as an oversight, and I think they accepted that.
Yeah, I mean, like I said...
I mean, we're human.
We, you know, we had never written a grant before, so it was a, you know, quite a step, you know, to do that. And we had some omissions and errors in the process along the way, which now that we know and wouldn't be happening to, you know, in the future. But I just want to make sure that everybody, you know, I mean, because it's not only the Board of Selectmen, but the residents also...
Absolutely. And we've promised...
Sometimes don't seem to understand that we have all of these regulations that we have to follow, and the three agencies want different things, so...anyway, so we haven't heard back from the engineer, and we're waiting on that, and once we do, we'll take that, look at it. I think that I would recommend that the Road Committee ask Inland Fisheries come down to a meeting and review it, you know, and that way, it's, you know, everyone can be invited to the meeting and have that discussion at that point.
I think I was at a meeting at the bridge with the Army Corps. Was that Colin?
Yeah, Colin is Army Corps. Deanna was Inland Fisheries.
What I recall, maybe I didn't get it correctly, was that he felt that there was the possibility of doing that in kind so long as we didn't put any soil...there was some...
We can't move any soil.
Can't move any soil, but I thought the engineers felt...
We can't, we can't touch anything there. There may be a way of doing it. That's what the engineer's working on.
Right. And Colin had said that that was something that could be done there, too, at that meeting.
He was...he expressed concern about it being able to be done.
Okay.
That, you know, we don't know until the engineer comes in.
I guess we'll find out, right?
We'll find out, yep.
If we trigger Army Corps permitting, that culvert can't be done in kind.
Right, yeah, right. I know.
So, I mean, it's...
I understand.
Anyway, and then one other thing I wanted to talk about was the RSMS. We lost Cheryl, who was going to do the data entry. So at this point, I wanted to ask if someone else could be doing it. I mean, we had the two Road Commissioners, me and Kim, at the training. It shouldn't take long to just do that bit of data entry, to get that program up and running. So I'm looking for some guidance from the Selectmen as to how we can get this done. So coming into our spring season, we'll have that program ready for our Road Commissioners.
Do you have the data assembled that needs to be entered? So it's simply keying, and it's not particularly complicated?
Sitting at the computer and putting it in.
It's just keying data in. Is it possible to get a temp, even a temp agency person to come in and just do this?
You could. I mean, it would probably be easier with somebody that sat through the training or one of the road guys or, you know, somebody that knows the area, because if we're, depending on what extent, based on some of the training that I sat through, you're really going to need to know the roads and know, I mean, the program offered things, you had to kind of be over that portion of the road, you know? So if there was a stop sign somewhere, I mean, you need to know the area, so a temp might have a hard time. I mean, there was talk about the Road Commissioners coming in and doing it, certainly Leslie and/or Kim. I mean, we can set them up on a laptop, the work would go onto a thumb drive so that we can back it up on the server.
I mean, if, you know, if Kim had time, if she and I wanted to sit, you know, could sit down together and get, and just get through it, you know, that would work.
If I come in on Thursdays, too, you know...
In the evenings?
In the evenings, I could work on it then, too. While I'm here, because, you know, it's not usually too busy.
Well, you're going to another office, yeah, you don't need us, so...
So, you know, but...
So, I mean, that would work. I mean, in that way, we have it ready for spring.
You know, and...
Can we set a deadline for having it done?
Well, I think that, I mean, you can set a deadline, but now that we've just, you know, said that, you know, Leslie and Kim are going to do it.
Everyone understands what the, you know...
I've wrote about the Road Commissioners because they're supposed to be involved in this, I know. Adam over there going, "Shh."
And they're thinking it's winter season, it's plowing, we're not entering.
Right, right.
And they're going to be on the clock, honestly.
I'm not saying what the deadline should be, but I think everyone understands...
Why don't we just, why don't we set a date of getting them to start after the new year and putting, keeping it on the agenda for updates to make sure it's moving along?
Well, it would be nice to have it done before spring.
Yeah, I mean, you can set a deadline, but I mean, there's nothing in stone if you don't hit it.
I mean, I think, you know, if you want to set a deadline, I think that, you know, if we do something like March 1st, you know, that gives us two months to get it done.
Okay.
And so who's actually responsible for meeting that deadline?
What are the consequences if it's not done? We've got two volunteers.
No, I meant, who's sort of managing to make sure that everyone does what they need to do?
Well, there's only two, it's only going to be Leslie and Kim sitting down doing the data entry.
Because we don't have Cheryl anymore, who was going to get working on it. Now we're waiting...
We have a brand-new employee, but she started yesterday.
Yeah.
She's not going to be up to...
No.
And now it's just as bad as, right, bringing an temp. And it's just not an option right now.
So...
And I don't know, I mean, Will's standing behind you. Can we hear from him? Will, do you have some thought on inputting into this system?
I got no problem with it. I mean, it's kind of...
Do you think that on...
If we're going to do it, we're going to just pick like a day to get it over, because I just don't have time to come in and out, you know? I don't, you know, I don't want this to come back, you know, and say, oh, geez, you're not using the system here for anything for nothing, so... What we're going to do, we just got to pick like a day or two days to get it done, I don't know what.
Also, to remember, we don't know what's going to snow, what is going to snow.
Well, I mean, that's, we could play that all year, but I mean, I think, you know, if we picked something like middle of the week, it's going to happen, it's going to happen, you know, it's a Wednesday or weekend type, you know, maybe we can make something work by the end of the week.
Pick a day, let's set the computer up, and I mean, we can do it the same way if you want to, you know, if you guys want to do it as a group and...
Because the other thing, too, is that, you know, I got to stop that, and I'll be going on three years doing stuff, so I got to stop.
Right, well, you have to get all the information in first about the roads and stuff. We're not entering payroll and repairs and those kind of things, right? We're just trying to make sure that all the...
And we got to get the roads.
Basic data is in.
It's the condition of the road.
Right.
Nice thing, we need to have pretty much policy and technical condition.
Well, then, I mean...
So next Thursday night?
Let me check my calendar.
Kind of check your calendar.
I'll let you know if that...
Yeah, just... I saw that. I saw that over there.
Yeah, I mean, in the beginning, I mean, certainly, we appreciate Kim and...
What time do you open on Thursday?
Kim and Leslie's time, but originally, the Road Commissioners agreed to do it as well, so...
Yeah, they were going to do the updates once it was, I'm sorry, Will, once it was all set, ready to go. And as they finished work, they were going to update it.
So the idea is that you, the two of you, will just put the condition of the roads, the data that we've created and we have on paper...
But we have put it in.
And then weekly or biweekly, those are the deadlines to set to make sure the guys are updating it accordingly.
So maybe they don't need to come this first time, you know, first or second time. Once we get to the end of it, then we can give them a call and say, okay.
All right. Come in, bring in your updates, and we'll get, you know, make sure that they can maneuver the system.
Right.
Because the training was a little while ago, so...
Yeah, and it was a little...that training...anyhow.
We're smart, we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
So why don't you call me either tomorrow, Friday? Look at your schedule for next Thursday. We'll tentatively make it next Thursday, and we'll get started on it.
Yeah, like I said, I just need to check my schedule, because I don't have...
And then, gentlemen, after that, Adam, Will, it's all yours once we get the bases in.
No problem. I'll switch off that real quick. So how are we going to enter the data? Are we going to come to the Town Hall like on Monday morning?
Yeah, because...
That's the best time to do it. I'm going to put my payroll on.
Oh, yeah.
Do it, get over with.
Yes, yes. And we'll be able to help you in-house once we figure out how to put the past budget stuff in, because we keep saying that we really want to start at the beginning of some fiscal year. So for this year, for example, we'll pull the payroll starting July 1st of 2021. And, you know, once we get two or three weeks in, I mean, office staff will be able to do some of that data entry. I mean, the new person will be able to fill that in. We'll work on going backwards, catch up from the beginning of this fiscal year to current, and then we'll work on the back stuff, but we'll just, you know, we'll have you do a few weeks, get us on the ball rolling, and, but this is step one. It's going to be a little more than we think.
Yeah.
So call me, and we'll get a date scheduled. I'll work it out with Kim.
Okay, all right. That's all I have, unless you guys have a question for me.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Something about the roads here. So about the guard rail.
Oh, yes.
Geez, so I talked to the guy the other day, talked to the guy today from Mayland, and he's all like, he's, he's hot now, he's not, so he's home, working from home, so I sent, so he's on his office at all this one. So I sent him an email, told him, I think the stakes are fine. I told him, give me a price, so I'm just getting the rail, the new piece of guard rail, and I'll put it up myself, so I'm waiting to hear about it right now.
And it's kind of unfortunate, because it is an insurance claim. We just want to make sure.
When I called him today, I told the kid, or the gentleman I talked to, because I did, you know, office press, I told him, it's an insurance thing, I need this. I called three, four weeks ago, but I think we got to start looking for a different guard rail company, because they don't like coming out this far anyways, so I'm going to do some hunting around and see if I can find somebody that would be closer in New Hampshire somewhere, because they just, they got no reason to come out this far. They got enough work where they are, so...
Okay. Well, and if they're not willing to help us on emergencies, maybe it's time to find a new company anyways.
Yeah, no, they, maybe the guy that I dealt with in the past told me there's a couple of other companies, and if I can get a couple, then I'll call them, but I'll keep on and see if I can get a price and get a fix.
All right, perfect, thank you. Did we get our sign up?
Oh, yeah, it's all...
Thank you.
Any other department head or committee chair updates? All right, well, then we'll move on to old business, A, policies.
So we are going to table the policies tonight because we are without David. However, I'm sure you'll be pleased to know that I'm going to add one to your pile. Sorry, I didn't give you this earlier. We agreed to go alphabetical and all of that, but this is an updated pandemic policy based on everything going on with COVID and some updated governor's orders. We really need to get this one approved next week, so nothing to do right at the moment. Take it home and add it to the pile, and we'll get it on next week's agenda.
All right. Moving on to new business, A, engagement letter, Drummond and Woodsum.
So as the board is aware, based on ongoing personnel, possible litigation issues that we have in conflicts with other firms, and recommendation from another firm, we have sought out the assistance from Drummond and Woodsum. They're not strangers to us. There are some previous attorneys, Leah Racham, who was somebody that represented the Town of Acton for many years, who, through Bergen and Parkinson, works there as well. But this is a very standard engagement letter. I have gone through it with a fine-tooth comb. A majority of the letter really just talks about fees. It's more designed, I'm going to guess, for the average person off the street. It talks about deposits and additional charges, estimates. As a municipality, a majority of it's not going to pertain to you. It talks about their confidentiality clause, but most importantly, the last page talks about your right to terminate their representation at any time, with or without cause, by notifying them in writing. So it's just a required document before they will actually serve us.
Do we need to make a motion?
You do. Place on the last page for two signatures, please.
Well, you looked at it, too, but...
Yeah, I sent it to both of you.
We're going to make a motion first.
Okay. I guess I'd like to make a motion to appoint Drummond Woodsum to represent the Town of Acton with a particular personnel matter.
Just in case we need him for something else, we can make a motion to sign the engagement letter as presented.
Oh, okay.
Just in case we needed him for something else.
Make a motion to sign the engagement letter to Drummond Woodsum.
Perfect.
I'll second that.
I guess that's it.
So all in favor? All opposed?
Does this need a signature?
Yes, on the back page, please.
Oh, okay.
B, I'm going to be looking for a motion.
There you go, Jim.
Thank you.
Make a motion to go into, I'm sorry, did you want to say something before? Make a motion to go into executive session through into 405.6.e, legal consultation.
Great, and I'll second that, since it's been moved and seconded. All in favor? All opposed? We back out.
We're ready.
We're ready? I just need a motion.
Motion to come out of executive session and go into a regular session?
Yep. Do you want to just come out? Yep.
Anything else?
Just the time.
Oh, and the time is 7:10.
So I'll second that. All in favor? All right. Let's see here. C, resignation.
We received a written resignation from Jamie Packwin. Please consider this my official resignation as the Acton Rec Committee member, and fortunately, this has proven to not be a suitable fit. Mrs. Packwin has not been at the last several meetings, so the rec has been running without her. I think she was able to attend one in the beginning, but I think there was just a conflict in schedule, but certainly, we appreciate the time that she did put in. You'll need to make a motion to...
Accept it.
Accept it.
Make a motion to accept her resignation from the Rec Committee?
Perfect.
I'll second that. All in favor? All righty. Warrant Finance Committee appointments.
Okay, so as promised, we advertised that for the couple of weeks over the holiday. We had two positions open and two people of interest. There is no rhyme or reason on these other than the, one is a term through June of 2022, one's a term through June of 2023. I chose them according to who came forward first. The board wants to change that. Before I tell you which one is which, tell me now, but otherwise, that was the only method I had. You're welcome to meet with them both, but they both serve well on the committee, it was just putting one in each spot. So Margarita Bogle, looking for a motion to appoint her to the warrant and finance through June 30th of 2023, and Ramiro Lopez through June 30th, 2022.
Ramiro Lopez. Make a motion to appoint, can I have that so I can not murder the names? Margarita Bogle for a term through the period ending 6/30/2023 to the warrant and finance committee, and secondly, to appoint Ramiro Lopez to a term on the warrant and finance committee for the term ending 6/30/2022.
All right, I second that. So it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Can you just sign?
I got to sign that.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, so moving on, E, transfer station superintendent.
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the town administrator to make an offer to candidate A for the position of superintendent of the transfer station.
I'll second that, it's removed and seconded, all in favor?
Aye, thank you.
So I'll reach out to the candidate and update you next week in an executive session of where that stands.
Very good.
Great, thank you. All right, public comments? Anybody have any public comments?
Hi, not so much a comment, but I was reading the, looking for volunteers on the committees, and just FYI, capital improvement is looking for two people, not just one, it says one in that notice, and we'd like to get our first report completed probably by end of March 1st of April, so it's imperative, if somebody is willing, hit the please.
I will certainly fix it, but we certainly haven't filled the first one, but it should be fixed. I'll update it before I leave tonight.
Thank you, yeah, I mean, we want to get, we've got a lot of work done on our first.
Been trying to sell it at the counter.
You know, we're a nice committee.
We tell them that.
You are.
We're nice people, you know, we've been known to put, you know, a piece of candy in front of everybody, so anybody looking for us, you know, a good place to be for the town, we welcome, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just have a question, why is it that the executive session is in the middle of the meeting?
This particular one was done in the middle of the meeting, because we were paying counsel, and it was a financial decision to get him in and out as quickly as possible. Normally, if it's something they handle in-house, we try to do it at the end, so that you're not all waiting, but if we're paying an outside source, it seems fiscally responsible to rule it along.
Okay, thank you.
When would you like to see it?
Pardon?
When would you prefer to see it?
The executive?
Yes.
Session? Well, I mean, you guys don't come out and tell us anything about what's going on, so.
At the end?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, yeah, if that's possible, I, personally, I think.
That's usually when we.
Then you don't have to wait around. Yeah, I get it, yeah. We'll see if we.
You're kind of hangry.
Hmm?
Hangry, he's hungry, he's hungry.
Well, I'm sure both of the selectmen, based on the legal consultation and last week, I think we posted pending litigation, will can assure the public that this is not public information.
Yeah, right, absolutely. Any other comments? All right, well, then I'll get on to announcements. All right, December 30th, planning board at 6:00 PM. Wednesday, January 5th, capital improvement committee, 4:30, board of selectmen at 6:00 PM. And then Thursday, the 6th, is the planning board at 6:00 PM. January 8th is the sidewalk, 55 Red Gate Lane at 10:00 AM. January 10th, conservation committee at 7:00 PM. January 11th, rec committee at 6:00 PM. January 12th, board of selectmen at 6:00 PM. January 19th, board of selectmen, 6:00 PM. The 20th of January, planning board at 6:00 PM. And Monday, January 24th, warrant and finance at 6:00 PM. And Wednesday, January 26th, board of selectmen, 6:00 PM. With that, I guess I need a motion to.
To adjourn?
Yeah.